Calling the meeting to order. Let's go ahead and do the roll call.
Arcana Palio.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Kyle Miederman.
Eric Coran.
Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any need for an executive session? No? Okay. Is there any call to the public? Okay, then let's move to the fun stuff. Superintendent, recognition of 2022 retirees.
Good evening. Just a little bit of logistics. When I call the retirees' name, if you will come join me at the front, and we will have you go this way so at the end we can get a picture together. So tonight is one of those nights where we recognize the many years of experience in this room and the impact that they have on our students, and we are very appreciative of all the folks we are about to talk about. We're going to start with Andy Anderson from Lake Havasu High School.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Anderson will be greatly missed at LHHS by both his colleagues and students. Mr. Anderson has taught Algebra I, II, and oftentimes teaches a repeater class to our struggling students. Mr. Anderson's students love his classroom because he is so positive no matter the outcome. He takes the impossible task of making high school kids love going to math class. Looks like a walk in the park. As Mr. Anderson goes off into retirement, there will be a very large void of energy and positivity, as he would always say to his students, "That's gold, baby." And next we have Callie George from Lake Havasu High School. I'll just read a little bit. Mrs. George ran one of the most popular areas at LHHS, the Career Center. The Career Center was a favorite to our students because of the atmosphere that was created by Mrs. George. Not only was there a welcoming atmosphere, she was also there to truly help them beyond high school. Next, we have Joni Hall from Lake Havasu High School. Throughout the years, Mrs. Hall has provided a classroom atmosphere that is like going to grandma's house. Mrs. Hall is one of the most thoughtful and caring individuals for all of her students. The expertise that she has provided in Read 180 has afforded our struggling readers and English language learners an area of growth and success. The students that have been lucky enough to have Mrs. Hall as a teacher are very fortunate and better off for it. She is a very proud mother and should be just as proud of her career and the lifelong positive effect she has had on our students. Next, from our maintenance department, we have Shane Bolinger. Shane has been with the district 25 years and has been the main person taking care of all of the AC repairs and replacements, a job that is valued by all of our staff and students. He has been a big part in helping to get the district millions of dollars in school facilities board grant funding as well. Shane has been involved in bringing to life many of our district projects over the years. His shoes will be very hard to fill, and he will be missed by all, but especially by his supervisor, John Simpson. So from transportation, we have Dan Buckenberger. I will share that Dan did an amazing job for LHUSD. His work ethic was outstanding, and he was always very professional. He was a positive start to all of his students' day. Next, from Thunderbolt Middle School, we have Carmela Conroy. So Carmela retired in December after 15 years of service as a custodian at Thunderbolt. She is a caring and compassionate person. She was always known as a hard worker and someone who is extremely dependable. Next, from Thunderbolt Middle School, we have Linda DiAngelo. Linda will be retiring from Thunderbolt as the school librarian. She has been here for the past 20 years. Luckily for us, she has graciously agreed to continue to serve our school under the PREO program. Linda not only runs the library, but our detentions and in-school suspension as well. Mrs. D is loved and well-respected by the students. Previous students are known to come to Thunderbolt just to ask if Miss D is still here so they can see her. She's made an impact on many students over the years with her caring and compassionate nature. Above all this, she helps with all-state testing and technology used on campus. She also worked with the Bikes for Books program this year. She will be -- we are excited that she is returning next year. Next, from Thunderbolt Middle School, we have Nisa Harris. Nisa is retiring as our computer science teacher after 27 years in the district. She started in 1991 as a kindergarten teacher at Starline and then taught at Nautilus before moving to middle school at Daytona and Thunderbolt. Nisa has been the department chair for exploratories and the advisor for NJHS over the past couple of years, and as you know, she is this year's LHUSD Teacher of the Year. Nisa has been a beneficial asset to our onsite technology needs and an inspiration to other teachers. She finishes her career at Thunderbolt on top as LHUSD Teacher of the Year again, and we wish her luck in her new business adventure, and we look forward to continuing to see Nisa on occasion as a substitute teacher. Next, at Thunderbolt Middle School, we have Gino Licari. Gino will be retiring as our PE teacher this year after 28 years. He originally started at Daytona, where he worked for 12 years, before transferring to Thunderbolt to finish out another 16 years of service. He has coached several different sports, and he has impacted many students over his career. Gino has recently become a certified yoga instructor, where he will continue educating others through his yoga class instruction. The office will miss hearing his quiet voice while instructing his students. Next, from Smoke Tree, we have Sue Fauzon. Mrs. Fauzon has served in many roles over her years at LHUSD. She began her career in education as an administrative assistant, moved into technology, worked with the district in the special education department, taught general education classes, self-contained classes, and finally ended her career as an intermediate resource teacher. Along the way, she has mentored many educators with patience and kindness. She always has the best interest of every student at heart and goes above and beyond to not only support students, but also their families. She is the first one to jump in and offer to fill any need we may have. Sue will be remembered by the Smoke Tree community as an outside-of-the-box thinker who always puts the needs of others above herself. She is a true champion for LHUSD and will be deeply missed. Next, from Smoke Tree, we have Jessica Miller. So Jessica has been a valued part of the Cougar Cub House for over 20 years. She would say -- some would say she is the glue that holds all the pieces together. She has never hesitated to help with our young students, no matter how much was on her plate. She always puts the needs of our students first. Next, from Starline, we have Barbara Gonzalez. Barbara was in the role as a special education paraprofessional. After a few years, she asked Ms. Triasi if she would be interested to support in the office at Starline. During her time as an office support, she organized all materials for the student intervention team meetings, worked with our English language learners, and monitored our lunch and learn. She attended to every detail in her assigned tasks, and being bilingual was a great asset as she supported our Spanish-speaking parents. Next, from Starline, we have Marie Curvin. Since Ms. Triasi has been the principal of Starline Elementary, Marie has taught second grade. When she thinks of Marie, she thinks of a wealth of educational resources: Young Authors' Night, Science Fair, smiley faces, and arriving early to work each day. When you need a hands-on manipulative educational DVD or game, Marie is very generous to share her materials with others. She has supported organizing Young Authors' Night, where students created books and writing is displayed for parents to enjoy. Marie organized securing judges for the school-wide Science Fair and made sure every student was provided with a participation ribbon. A large painted smiley face is outside Marie Curvin's classroom, which has the tagline, "Smile and the world smiles with you." Most days, Marie would arrive to work before the sun came up, so Ms. Triasi believes in retirement she might enjoy sleeping in a little and spending special time with her grandson in Tucson, Arizona. Next, from Nautilus, we have Joe Thomas. Mr. Thomas has proudly been serving students throughout Arizona since 1992. He has taught every grade, K through 8, including time at Thunderbolt and at his favorite school, Nautilus. Mr. Thomas has taken great steps to build culture through Sunshine Committees, opening the Nautilus Garden, and supporting his peers. Next, from Nautilus, we have Donna. I'm going to apologize if I get this wrong. Donna has been a dedicated and passionate member of the Nautilus community since 1998, serving in various instructional and leadership roles on our campus. Donna has taught second and third grade, served as a magnet teacher, and been part of reading intervention. She leads our tutoring programs and school intervention team process. She has participated in many committees over the year at Nautilus, years at Nautilus, and at the district level that have contributed to the success of LHUSD, including PTSo, PBIS, SSAP, ESI, Site-Based Council, Site Leadership Team, Curriculum Pilots, Curriculum Committees to write and create curriculum, Teacher Evaluation Rubrics, Technology, Smartboard, Galileo, DNA, and Illuminate, Title I Articulation, District Interpreting, EL Parent Information. Donna has impacted thousands of students in our community through her service, and we are very thankful for her service. Next, from Havasupai, we have Liz Welch. Liz started in the district at Oregrande before becoming part of our Havasupai family. Mrs. Yates knows her favorite part of working here was the family atmosphere, which she extended to all of our students and their families. Next, from Havasupai, we have John Brazio. John has been with our district for 12 years. He started as a split custodian between Havasupai and Nautilus and then moved into the FSP position the following year at Havasupai. He is well-known around the campus as Mr. John. He jumps to assist whenever there is a need and supports everyone in any way he can. His favorite part of the job is the kids. He loves to interact with them and makes sure that each of them knows that they are an important part of coyote country. He has even been known to sport the bunny ears now and then. John brought tug-of-war and water-people art to our school on field day. He sprays them and leaves their silhouettes on our walls. These have both become traditions that the students and staff at Havasupai look forward to at the end of the school year. Mr. John looks forward to running the local pistol matches out at Sarah Park. He and his wife have traveled to compete for years and look forward to continuing that adventure together. Mr. John will be forever in our hearts as he is a special part of our community. Next, at Havasupai, we have Norma Zink. Norma has been in our district for 20 years. She has called both Havasupai and Smoke Tree home, teaching 4th grade for 19 years and ending with 6th grade this year. She has been an integral part of our district, serving as L-chair, Coordinator for Compensatory Education Summer School for five years, part of the curriculum mapping team for many years, so many we lost count, and helping to nurture future teachers by teaching at MCC for six years and NAU for 10 years. Courses include study skills at MCC and literacy for future educators at NAU. This year, Norma earned her National Board Certification as well. She is a wealth of knowledge and experience that she freely shares with all of us, not to mention the laughs and entertainment. She can always put a smile on our faces. Norma looks forward to her retirement, when she will be able to frequent concerts and shows in Vegas with all of her newfound time. Next, from Jamaica, we have Patricia Inglesey. Mrs. Inglesey is a teacher who has always been passionate about education. According to her family, she has always felt a calling to pursue a career in education. When her daughter entered into middle school, she made the decision to put her current career path as a singer on hold and pursue the dream of becoming an educator. She graduated with summa cum laude honors for both her degrees in music and elementary education and literacy. She was a master teacher and was loved by her professors and colleagues. Mrs. Inglesey's family describes her as a graceful warrior, fearless, determined, diplomatic, and gracious under pressure. She has made a lasting impact on the lives of many students in LHUSD for the last seven years, teaching kindergarten at Jamaica Elementary. She has cultivated a love of learning and positive first-school experience for many students. She has loved and cared for so many children using her skills as a literacy specialist to help children grow in their reading skills and become lifelong readers. We wish her nothing but the best of times and new memories as she moves on to the new adventures that are awaiting her and her husband, Raymo, in their retirement together. Best wishes, Mrs. Inglesey, from your family and the entire CROCK family as well. And next, from Smoke Tree, we have Steve Wayman. Steve has been inspiring a love for music and Lake Havasu City students for 18 years. His kind nature, friendly smile, and positive attitude made him a great colleague. Students always love to go to his music class. Over the years, Steve has worked with grade levels to put on numerous Thanksgiving or Christmas programs and taught many students to play the guitar in an extracurricular club. So we're going to move off script for just a second. We do have two members of our community who their retirements were celebrated last year, but they are leaving us for the final time this year. So I would like to recognize Ms. Corey Triasi, who will no longer be -- serves at Starline for many years. Thank you very much. And I would also like to recognize Mrs. Aggie Walter, leaving the Director of Student Services. So if we could have you all kind of scrunch together a little bit, we're going to get your picture. And once again, just a huge round of applause for all of the work that you see in front
I think we do have some tissues up here available if anybody needs them. So if you need them, feel free to take one. Next up, we have Marcia Becker, Career and Technical Education Coordinator, Lake Havasu High School CTE students, recognizing national and international competition qualifiers.
Mr. President, members of the board, thank you so much for allowing us some space to recognize our Career and Technical Education student organizations. That's what the acronym CTSo stands for. We have a lot of acronyms in CTE. So our CTSo's are an integral part of our Career and Technical Education programs. Each program has a CTSo, and they embed it into the academics as well as state competitions. So tonight, we're recognizing students who rose to the top, who competed against others who were in their same fields, in their same CTSo's, and who earned a spot to go to nationals or international competition. So first, I would like to call up Marie Hendry, who is our Teacher of Education Professions class. Her CTSo is Educators Rising. And you can come on up with all of your students that are here. Okay, so she had three students who earned this recognition. The first one is Abigail Swan. She earned -- yes. She got third place in Early Childhood Education Instructional Support. Abigail created a lesson for preschoolers and showed how she would scaffold the learning to meet the needs of her diverse class. She also had to show how she would keep students engaged and focused throughout the lesson. And second place, we had Abrel Rodriguez. She had a partner, Daisy Sanchez, and they competed in Chapter Service Project, and their project was Read Across America. And they developed this idea from the stakeholders' meeting, where all of the local preschool directors and Marie and Kathy meet. And so they came up with an idea for this project to go out into the preschools across town and read. The students had to present on how the event was organized. They contacted the directors personally. They decided on the classrooms and the content of the reading, and then they had to follow up with an activity after the reading was complete. So congratulations. And I think Ms. Hendry and her students have a goodie for some of the school board.
Yeah. Because we're Education Professions, and we're involving the educational field, we have our T-shirts. So we have T-shirts for all of the board members.
Marie has taught several educators that have come all the way through her system and back into our district at various levels, so we are very lucky to have her in charge of our Education Professions program. Thank you. Okay, next, I would like to call up HOSA and the HOSA Advisor, Ms. Nancy Schwager. Will you come on up and bring your students? All of you, why don't you all come up at once, and I'll talk to you. So when I call your name, will you just step forward, and I'll talk a little bit about your competition. Lauren Intak, third place. Lauren competed in the Nursing Assistant Program. The nursing assistant provides members with the opportunity to gain knowledge and skills required for patient care in medical settings. The competitive event consists of two rounds. One round is written, multiple-choice test, and the top-scoring competitors will advance to round two, and that's a skills assessment. The event aims to inspire members to learn more about the field of nursing and how to provide quality care. Next, we have Tin Vu, who earned third place in Pathophysiology. I get to have Tin in my class, too, so congratulations, Tin. Pathophysiology provides members with the opportunity to gain knowledge and skills regarding pathophysiology concepts. This competitive event consists of a written test with a tiebreaker essay question. The event aims to inspire members to learn about the anatomy and physiology of human diseases impacting the health and community. And next, we have Sean Miguel Mendoza. And he earned third place in physical therapy. And the physical therapy competition provides members with the opportunity to gain knowledge and skills required for assisting patients with recovery. This competition consists of two rounds. Round one is written and multiple-choice test, and the top-scoring competitors will advance to round two. And round two is a skills assessment. This event aims to inspire HOSA members to learn more about physical therapy concepts and techniques. All right. And our final competitors were a group, so we have Kaia Lamb, Shelby McGregor, and Calico They took second place in creative problem solving. So these students had to -- they were given a problem in the medical field, and they had to come up with solutions for solving this problem, and they competed, they...
Thirty minutes they had. They were given a scenario, and as a group, they had 30 minutes to come up with a solution and eight minutes to present.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's pretty amazing. Congratulations. Thank you, Nancy. Okay. All right. Will you guys squish together? And HOSA stands for Health Occupation Students of America, so these are our future healthcare Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. And finally, do we have any of our International Thespian students available tonight? I know Mr. Fallis wasn't able to make it tonight. He just let me know he had some things come up, and I know some of his students were -- they had a community event. But I do want to publicly recognize our International Thespian Club, our program. They earned a gold star rating at their state competition. They had the highest or biggest number of competitors going to internationals this year, was 17. If you haven't been to one of Mr. Fallis's events or productions, definitely go see one. I have to say, my favorite was this last production that was Addams Family. It's incredible to see what they do. So thank you very much. I'll make sure that they get those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. A lot of wonderful kids doing a lot of wonderful things. Next up is Nicole Gray, Valerie Rose Johnson, and Larry Olson, coaching team for the Lake Havasu High School Mathletes.
Okay. We'd like to start by calling all of our Math Olympians up to the front. I feel short. Ah, there we go. Okay. The Math Olympic Competition is hosted by Mojave Community College every year. It is a way to celebrate mathematical proficiency and friendly competition between our local area high schools. So besides us, we also had Telisys present, Laughlin High School, Needles High, Academy of Building Industries, which is Fort Mojave, River Valley High School in Mojave Valley, Mojave Accelerated Learning Center in Bullhead City. And we had over 65 students compete in the competition with 18 possible medals and Lake Havasu... And Lake Havasu High brought home twelve of those possible medals. There were six levels of difficulty, and we are just going to honor our students that achieved those. So, starting with geometry, we have Ava Tupontz, who won bronze medal. I don't think she's here. We also had, in geometry, Tanner Mazick, who won gold. Good job, Tanner. In Algebra II, we had Emily Blake bring home the bronze medal. And Japan Patel bring home the silver medal. This is his wonderful mother, because he's on a trip with Close Up right now.
I have one him because he's on a trip for the...
Yes. Very involved student. In Precalculus, we have Jesse Palaeo Garcia. He won bronze. And we also have Fiona Janik, who won silver. In Statistics, we have KK Wong, who won bronze. Nathan Merrill, who brought home silver. And Jamie Henson, who brought home gold. And then in Calculus, everyone's subject they don't like to take. Cade Bergerger won bronze. Colin Redman won silver. And Aaron Miller won gold. We also want to recognize our members who helped contribute to our overall first-place win. We have Kendra Holland. Tyler Hayeki. Kaia Lam. Oh, she's a bit at the end. Up here twice, Kaia. And Alex Galagos? Did I pronounce that right, Alex? So I just want to say that I have had most of these students come through my classroom at one point, and they are hardworking and amazing students, and I'm gonna cry because I'm so proud of them. So proud of them. So good.
Oh, I am? Okay.
So with the last two groups of students, I just wanted to say a little bit of something, just a little bit personal. I have gotten to see a lot of those kids, both in the CTE and in the math, grow up. They do a lot of activities outside of the classroom. So there are sponsors, other teachers. These types of activities outside the class are really key for creating opportunities for students. So I want to give one more round of applause to all the sponsors, parents, friends that help them to do these activities. Next up, we have Lake Havasu City Education Association, Carol Nowakowski. So again, follow that up, please.
Welcome. Good evening, President and members of the Board. What I've just handed you is the Arizona Education Association proposal that they have sent to legislators as we are closing in on the end of our session. So you will see where they are requesting ongoing funding, one-time funding, and then reasonings for it. So this has gone out. It is what we're proposing for, hopefully, as they finalize their budget and as they are sitting, discussing it within themselves, that they will consider, since they have such a large amount sitting that needs to be spent, that they will consider public education, where to spend it. So I just wanted to present you with that information. And tonight was amazing. It was... I had to listen from back there. And so, congratulations to all the retirees and all of our winners. And I was hoping she'd stay, but my Emily, I was very excited to see her. So, but yes. And if you have any questions, let me know, and we'll keep a watch on the budget. Thanks.
Moving forward to Section Four, Consent Agenda. Any motion to accept or...
I move to accept.
I move to accept it as presented.
And I'll second.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
There are no discussion items, so let's move to action items. So the first action item, 6.1 Superintendent Recommendation for Principal of Starline Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Recently, we did have an interview panel who looked at candidates for the replacement of Ms. Triasi, who will be leaving us this year. It was a great process. We had wonderful candidates. It's exciting to know that there are many people that are interested in the position. But this evening, it is my pleasure to recommend Mrs. Ginny Sotner as the next principal of Starline Elementary School. Mrs. Sotner is returning to Starline Elementary School, a place where she attended as a child and where her two daughters now attend. Mrs. Sotner brings eighteen years of education experience to the Starline principal position. She holds a double bachelor's in sociology and hospitality management and a double master's in secondary English education and educational leadership. Mrs. Sotner is a nationally board-certified teacher and also a board-approved qualified evaluator after taking the necessary training to effectively evaluate and support staff. During her career in LHUSD, Mrs. Sotner has held a variety of teaching, teacher leadership, and student academic advisor roles to support student achievement and elevate the development of instructional staff. Currently, Mrs. Sotner serves as the district's curriculum and instruction coach, where she has led several curriculum adoptions, developed and co-facilitated new educator induction programs, and provided ongoing coaching to our newest hires. Mrs. Sotner has a passion for supporting staff in best practices that lead to increased student achievement outcomes. In addition to this work, Mrs. Sotner is also the English learner coordinator and works with staff to ensure our L-population is receiving timely and appropriate supports to succeed not only in their language acquisition, but their core academic subjects and also in life. Not only is she highly skilled at supporting the implementation of new programs, she has been an active member of both the teacher and principal evaluation committees. Mrs. Sotner has helped to develop evaluation tools that are grounded in best practices and focused on improving student achievement. She brings a wealth of knowledge in these areas and will be a great complement to not only Starline, but the entire administrative team. Mrs. Sotner's passion for education and LHUSD can be seen in all she has done in her career. She truly leads from her heart and cares deeply about our staff, students, and families. Outside of her professional duties, Mrs. Sotner focuses on her family and takes on active parent roles as she serves as a Girl Scout troop leader, SUCO advisor, and the Starline PTA president. She'll have to give that up. She has a deep knowledge of Starline's past traditions and remains involved in Starline's current practices. We are delighted to welcome Mrs. Sotner and know she will continue to preserve Starline's deep traditions, as well as move the school forward to support the needs of the community, all while advocating for what's best for LHUSD.
Any discussion or emotion?
I move to approve 6.1.
I second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
No.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Moving on is 6.2 Superintendent, 2022 to 23, monthly governing board meeting dates.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, all of the dates for governing board meetings during the upcoming school year will be held on the third Tuesday of each month at 6:00 PM in the district boardroom, which adheres to district policy with the exception of March 14th due to spring break. Other special meetings or work sessions will be scheduled as needed. As required by law, a notice of our regular meeting dates and posting locations are sent in January to the Mojave County Supervisor's Clerk. When special meetings and work sessions are needed, the same procedures for posting regularly scheduled meetings will be followed.
Discussion or motions?
I move to approve 6.2.
I move that we accept it as presented.
And then I'll second.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Next up, student achievement, Lenovo student laptops for Title I schools.
Mr. President and governing board, in order to support the technology needs of students, Nautilus Havasu by a Thunderbolt will purchase thirty laptops for student use. These laptops will be used to support student learning and intervention related to core content areas. The laptops selected are the Lenovo 100E model with Intel Celeron processor N4020, eleven-point-six-inch HD display, Windows 10 operating system, four gigs of memory, sixty-four gigabytes of RAM with a one-year mail-in warranty. This model is in use at all K8 schools and meets the needs of students in those grades. Federal Title I grant funds will be used to make this purchase, and as a result, the DHE contract vehicle, Lenovo NCPA Contract 01-97, will be used as the specifications listed in their RFP satisfy the requirements of federal procurement, including cost being weighted as the number-one factor in their scoring criteria. DHE Computer Systems is awarded... is an awarded vendor through the Lenovo NCPA Contract. DHE provided a quote of eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents, or two hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents per unit, plus tax and shipping, for a total not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Two other quotes were also obtained to verify that contract pricing is, in fact, reasonable. This purchase will exceed the hundred thousand dollar annual cumulative purchase for like items and therefore require governing board approval per the Uniform System of Financial Records. The item has been approved by the Business Office and Technology.
Did I hear that correctly, that it's an I3?
It is a 100E.
Did you hear that, Tom? It was a 100?
I'm sorry.
Did you hear that?
It's an I...
Sorry.
Yes, but it's got an I3 processor in it?
It has a Celeron processor in it.
Okay, that's okay.
I'll move to approve 6.3.
I second. Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes. Moving on, business services, Taher Contract.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. On January 7th, 2019, the district issued an RFP for a food service management company. On March 21st, 2019, the governing board approved an annual food service management contract with Taher for the 2020 school year with the option of up to four annual renewals. This would be the third of four possible renewals of the contract. The renewal documents have been submitted to the Arizona Department of Education and have been approved. Contract renewal, ADE preapproval, and other supporting documents are attached.
Any discussion or emotion?
I move that we approve it as presented.
I'll second. Do we have any word on whether the USDA is going to continue its free lunch program?
Not at this time, but Ann Taif is here from the district as well as Chris from Taher.
As of today, all the waivers are gonna end. So, starting August 8th, we will go back to what was normal, the national school lunch program, based on eligibility for meal applications.
And do you anticipate any disruption or problem with going back to the old system or...
A little bit. Beginning of the year, I plan on doing a lot of social outreach to get the word out.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes. Business Services, Job Order Contracting Construction Services.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. As part of the district's commitment to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities as communicated to voters and identified in the November 2016 Bond Voter pamphlet, the district is recommending building and site improvements at Jamaica Elementary and Lake Havasu High School. The scope of work will, while not a comprehensive list, will include the following. Jamaica Elementary, grading, fencing, paving coating of parking lot and drives, field and playground surfaces, concrete walkways, seat walls, stairs, et cetera. Lake Havasu High School, flooring, drywall painting, removing of ceiling tiles, ovens, counters, sinks, et cetera. Part of that process is actually two projects in one location. So one of the projects is converting home economics classroom to a classroom environment suitable for the CTE Fire Science Program and other courses as needed. And the other project is renovating the old admin offices for additional office program space for CTE, Havasu Online, et cetera. Concord General Contracting will be procured as a JOC through the One GPA Cooperative Contract 18-15 PV-04. Board Policy DJE states the maximum dollar amount of an individual job order. For a job order contracting construction service shall be two million dollars per project or as determined by the board. Concord's submitted bid totals include the following by site. Jamaica Elementary, that the district requests a not-to-exceed approval in the amount of two million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to provide owner contingency funds during the construction process. Lake Havasu High School, the district requests a not-to-exceed approval in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to provide owner contingency funds during the construction process. Bond, capital, and other allowable capital funds will be used to complete the Jamaica Elementary site renovations and LHHS A-Hall Admin Office Project. CTE 596 funds will be used for the classroom renovation at Lake Havasu High School. The wave board has approved the use of funds for this project. They did approve it on April 6, 2022, and this item has been reviewed and approved by
Any discussion or emotion?
I move that we approve it as presented.
And I'll second.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Olliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
You're up again, Mr. Miller. Business Services, 2021-22 Revised Budget.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. The revised 2021-22 budget includes financial adjustments to the overall budget limit based on funding changes that have occurred since the adoption of the annual budget last July. Per ARS 15-905, the governing board shall approve the revised budget and any overage expenditures in any of the following programs within the MNO budget for the fiscal year, while not overspending the overall budget limit. And those programs are listed there. The district does not expect any over expenditure in any of the funded areas mentioned above at this time. However, per ARS 15-905G, if there needs to be an over expenditure in any of the programs, we must have board approval prior to the end of the fiscal year. The maintenance and operations expenditures will not exceed the overall budget limit. The revised budget and summary sheets will provide...
John, we're doing a presentation first before we do that.
Oh, okay.
No worries.
So the budget revision is mandatory, as per 15-905, as stated in the action item. During this presentation, it's fairly brief, as the budget revision process is quite simply just reconciling to the Arizona Department of Education based on their reports. And what we're doing in this process is either capturing additional budget capacity, or we're revising downward and decreasing our budget capacity. So these are the four areas in which we'll look at briefly. So these are examples of some of the reports that are pulled from the Department of Ed for us to reference and then reconcile to during this process to make sure our general ledger then is in line with the budget capacity stated from the Department of Ed. So the first area is average daily membership, prior year and current year ADM. So there's a APOR, they used to call it an APOR 55-1 report. It's a basic calculation report now, where you can see the areas comparing one fiscal year to, last fiscal year to this current fiscal year, as shown in the red and green boxes at the top. So we take that information, you can see a snippet of that same report down at the bottom part of this slide. What we do is we take those numbers and then start to populate the data sheets within the documents that are actually submitted to the Department of Ed. And you can see where those figures are populated in the data sheet up above. The bottom part of that first document that I showed you from the state, taking the numbers for what they call a Group B add-on, these are our kids who qualify, have special services that are attached to them, or they require special services, also some of our K3 reading kids. And you'll note at the very bottom, and kind of the yellowish area there for the board members who are looking this way, down at the bottom, there is a new Group B add-on weight, which is letter G for gifted. So that is something that is new this year, and they're still calculating those figures at this particular time, so they're not true figures. ADE is going to actually do another recalculation in July to capture the actual numbers for all the districts throughout the state. But this is what you can see and expect in years to come. So we take that information, populate the data sheet that's shown up above. This is part, this is a tab within the Excel spreadsheet that is given us from the state. So the revision process, I take additional reports, and you can see here, this is an actual report that I use as a checkoff, as I'm ensuring that ADE's numbers do, in fact, reconcile to our budget revision, so that we can make sure that there are no variances. And so in this Budget 25 report, you can see where I'm checking off the key numbers that do transfer over into the spreadsheet that goes to the state and becomes a public document. The Budget 75 report is a report that we received earlier in the year that captures information earlier on in the fiscal year. It's also used after the AFR is populated and submitted to the state. They pull data from the annual financial report of the previous fiscal year and generate this document. You can see where, again, just reconciling certain numbers to make sure that we're, in fact, in line with the state. This is one of the budget forms. It's a smaller version of it. I collapsed some unnecessary information in there that are just all zeros. But you can see now, from the data sheets that were populated from the examples before, this starts to build out on what is page seven of the budget spreadsheet. And you can see the columns for maintenance and operations, and then unrestricted capital outlay for the purpose of this slide. In the next slide, you'll see where these numbers with the arrows point, where the arrows are pointing to these numbers actually do reconcile to the state document. Before we get to that, though, you'll see the number at the bottom right-hand corner, that is the general budget limit. So that would reconcile to the circle you have here, showing that these numbers are, in fact, captured, and we are recognizing the full potential of the full budget capacity given us by the state. Down at the very bottom here, just below that, if there were any unreconciled, if there was a variance here, that would populate right here. You can see right here, there is nothing. If I'm off in any of these numbers here, it would actually say I'm budgeting over-capacity by X amount of dollars, or I'm budgeting under-capacity by X amount of dollars. So we don't want to see that down here. We want to make sure we capture every dollar that's on the table from the state. Now, what this is, is that the budget capacity is your expenditure limit, as stated in the action item. So we want to make sure that we do not expend over this dollar amount. And again, we budget accordingly, and we typically have carry forward, to roll forward year after year after year. This is the reconcile, this is the report that I reconcile to, to ensure that those numbers are, in fact, accurate on the spreadsheet. Again, up close, you can, if you had documents side by side, you could actually see where this does make sense, but I'm trying to just explain the processes. They're not just numbers that we populate on a spreadsheet. We actually do true-up and reconcile. And then this is page eight of the budget worksheet that goes, the budget revision sheet that goes to the state. This is the unrestricted capital portion of it. Again, you can see the blue arrows. These numbers do tie out to ADE reports, and then that bottom, that number, the circle there at the bottom, is our unrestricted capital budget capacity. So financial transparency, again, this is at the end of the PowerPoint, but everything that we do, everything that we present, everything that is given us, is uploaded to the state, and you can also access that information from our website. After this meeting, going into tomorrow, these documents will be given to technology, so they can upload them in the next day or two to our website, and anyone in the public can access it. And my contact information is always there. The contact information is actually on page one of the cover page of the budget revision document. It's right there in the very front, so phone numbers, email addresses are there for anyone to call or email if they have questions.
Discussion or a motion?
I move that we accept it as presented.
And I'll second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes. I do want to say, Mr. Miller, that my favorite page in your spreadsheet is the last one, not for the reason you might think of just waiting for you to get finished, but for the transparency. I think it's very important to kind of reemphasize that to the public. If you're concerned about anything the school district is spending, you can look at it. And if it's just, you know, something you can't understand or don't know how to read, the contact information is available, and we would be happy to speak with you. So I just really want to emphasize that to the public.
As a part of our website?
Yes, exactly. 6.7 Business Service, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Mr. President, members of the Board, approval of vouchers for April and May of 2022 will be presented at the next meeting in June. That's due to the fact that this is the third, and we're still in the process of wrapping things up from the previous month. Normally, we have an extra week or two to get on top of that, but this was a quick turnaround for, so this budget revision can get to the state on time. But before you, student activity funds and auxiliary funds for March of 2022.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve 6.7.
I second.
I'll second that.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes. Next up, informational superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. This is the time of year for all of the celebrations. Testing is over. I know that principals and teachers are very happy and moving on to all of those celebratory events. So just, we have evenings of excellence coming up, and graduation, and many things that we can celebrate about our students. So we are looking forward to all of those. I also wanted to share one of our gifts and donations this month. I often talk about how the fact that our community is very generous. I wanted to share that Dave Ramsey Education is actually providing the foundations and personal finance curriculum for Thunderbolt Middle School students, unlimited number for one year, completely free to the district. So that was wonderful, and we're glad our kids will have access to that. And I also wanted to let everyone know, if you're looking to work with children or be part of a great team, we have an elementary hiring event that is tomorrow at Smoke Tree Elementary from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. There are some excited principals back there, so if you have a chance, come down and see us, and we would love to have you as part of the team.
Any informational items from the governing board members?
I just wanted to highlight that it is Staff Appreciation Week, and I've been seeing a lot of things going on in our elementary schools, our middle school and our high school to celebrate a year and a job well done by all of our staff members, and I just wanted to extend my thank you as well.
I'm going to add on, we had a bunch of students in here today. They did a lot of summer activities. I saw a lot of them in STEM, so I just want to promote some of the STEM activities that are going on this summer that I know about. A lot of the CTE students were also a part of the STEM, and that's also something that is very important, especially for the hosts of folks, to get involved with. I know Starline Elementary is doing camp invention early on in the summer, and that's, I believe, first through sixth graders, I believe, I think. Yes, thanks. Then we have the STEM Academy, which is going to be at Thunderbolt, and it's going to be for fifth through eighth graders. And then I know we have the SMART program that's going on that helps bridge folks from the middle school into high school doing math. Very important programs that can get your students off to a good start in those areas to help them to get opportunities down the line. Do we have any more call to the publics? Okay. Board suggestions for future agenda items. Press media. Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second it.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes, we're adjourned.